Testing, testing.
Steps to inflationary system. We identify the inflationary data in March and May, calculate the adjusted rates in May, report to council in June, July, and the rates are become effective September 30th of each year. So the system itself consists of two components. The first is the index calculation, which accounts for two factors. The first is land values based on the B C assessment property role and construction costs based on the stats Canada construction price index. And these two components are blended together to reflect investments in the current capital plan. The second component is a review of local economic indicators. This serves as a check to ensure the proposed rate adjustments are aligned with current economic indicators. The review of indicators includes GDP growth, employment, building permit values, housing starts, and other trends and forecasts. Overall staff's review confirmed that the proposed 1.2% increase of rates was aligned with the current economic indicators. The 1.2 inflationary adjustment is based on 1.2% increase in the construction price index, as well as a 1.4% increase in property values. And the graph below shows the historical inflationary adjustments over the years. Note in 2020, the city decreased rates by 0.8%, which was the first time rates were decreased. And in 2019, the rate increase only applied to the non-residential categories to reflect the weakening residential condo market at the time. Okay, and then the notification process that took place related to the recommended changes was noticed sent to various development groups, including UDI, NAOP, and Havan. The website was updated, as well as the density bonus zoning bulletin to include the proposed rates for 2021. Advice was given to development inquiries as were posted in two newspapers, and city clerks notified stakeholders. And again, note that staff have not received any correspondence on the proposed rate adjustments. So to conclude, staff are recommending a 1.2% inflationary rate increase to density bonus contributions effective September 30th, 2021. That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Just checking here. So we have questions from council. Sorry. Or you go. Yep, Council Hardwick, you have up to five minutes for questions to staff.
Yes, thank you very much. I think it's page five. Table one is the recommended 2021 rate adjustments. I note that there are substantially large ranges between neighborhoods from one to another, ranging from $3.37 to 337 to 12044 per square foot. Why is there such a large range?
It's Chris Cleven from Citywide and Regional Planning, happy to answer the question. Each one of these rates were set when public benefit strategies and area planning happened between 2014 and 2018. They reflect the package of goods or the package of public benefits that were needed to serve growth in these areas. They're variable because the size of the package of these area plan costs are different in each of these areas. And also because there's also an ability to pay testing that we do every time we implement one of these rates. So it reflects also the type of density and the height and value of density within each of these areas.
Okay, so Falls Creek Flats is at the high end at 12044 square foot. Could you illustrate for us why that would be so much higher, for example, than the 337 on a square foot at Grandview Woodlands?
Yeah, Chris Cleven, Planning Department. Falls Creek Flats, the FC2 is what you're referring to at 119, proposed to go to $120.44. That is because, Council Hardwick, there's residential in an industrial area. So the base zoning is a residential, is an industrial zoning, and this particular zoning district schedule permits rental residential. So that's why that one's so high. And that's typical anytime you add residential in an industrial area. It has a large amount of what we call land lift. And then in the, in the, I guess you're referring to the $3 rates in the Grandview Woodland area. Those are very small changes in additional density. Those are single family to low-density townhouse forms of development. And the economic testing revealed that there's only a small ability to make density bonus contributions without impacting the viability of these developments.
Thank you. Speaking of land lift, let's talk about inflation. You're, you're following the rate of inflation here with, with these increases, which I, I see as completely appropriate. Similarly, are you looking at the inflationary rate caused by rezoning in the first place? What I'm getting at is pace of change or rate of change in terms of inflation on the value of the properties. You said you were tying them to assessment values. Have you been tracking that in parallel stream? And I'm talking about pace of change and inflation being consistent between the two.
Chris Cleven, Planning Department. The, this public hearing in question is around this year's 2021 inflationary rate adjustment. The proposal that's before you reflects the council adopted system of inflationary adjustments, which is a reflecton of euro-year property value change and construction change. That is the basis of the, of the public hearing, and that's the basis for the rate change.
Thanks. I noticed in your chart on the inflationary rate that you adjustments, you started in 2012, although you stated earlier it was 2009 that council policy changed in this regard. What would we have seen if we'd gone back to 2009 in terms of inflation at that baseline?
Council Hardwick, if you go on, in the council report on page 12 of the PDF or appendix B, page 204, there is a table of historical inflation based on this index. We don't start going all the way back to 2010, because this just shows the last 10 years. But if you added up the annual inflationary index euro-year, you'd get the cumulative interest that's occurred over time. And it's ranged from a low of, yes, we actually decreased the rates in 2020, and the, and the index actually increased the rates a high of 11.9% in 2017. I can't, I don't have it with me right now to the 2011 and 2010 inflationary rates for those years.
I'm interested to know, but I'm mindful that my time is, is running out. This is something I'll pursue in the future because it was, as you observed, started in 2009, and this has shifted the paradigm in our overall growth financing paradigm. So I'm trying to understand it in more detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see here. There we go. Council Weave.
Yeah, my first question is recognizing that we're seeing a significant amount of the Camby Corridor RM8As for sale for a significant increase over assessment. Do we see that there might be an ability in some of these zones to increase the density bonusing to ensure that we are reducing speculation and land values that are rising in these areas due to the low-density zone bonusing?
It's Chris Cleven from planning again. Council, direct you to page five of the report. There's a list of the density bonus zones or the district schedules that have density bonusing schemes in them. And then there's the year established. The year established reflects when the rate was put into place. We do also, every four years after they're put into place, we do check with the market and we check with the public benefit strategy to. to see if there's an ability to capture more contributions without deterring development viability. So the ones you're referring to, the Canby Corridor, R M eight A, where there's a rate proposed of 5520, was last checked in 2018. And since then, we've done annual rate adjustments. We'll be checking those again in 2022.
So we only, we wait four years? We don't do, there's no ability for us to ensure that we can do it on yearly basis so that we're capturing the land value lift?
Chris Cleven, Planning, we do, we do monitor them between the four-year periods. And if we're finding that there is, the rates are set too low, we could trigger that rate adjustment earlier. Or if it's actually deterring development viability and there's less take-up in an area, we will revisit it to make sure we're not overcharging.
Okay, are any of these zones considered hot zones where property's gone up a certain value and we would see a reduction in property tax? And would that help trigger a rate adjustment for the density bonus contribution?
Chris Cleven, Planning Department. I'm not entirely sure how to answer your question there. We do monitor development activity in all of these areas. None of these areas are seeing excessive amounts of development or take-up in the development, in the density bonusing take-up. Generally, development revenues coming in from density bonusing applications have been modest. We see really only, you know, a dozen or so of these per year or more, slightly more. But I wouldn't say any of them are hotspots in terms of take-up of density bonusing.
Okay, another question. We just got a report from the Canadian British Columbia Expert Panel on housing, and it talked about linking the infrastructure needs in certain areas to land values. So have we looked at creating a utility density bonus rate to pay for the utilities that would be needed for that increased density for a density bonus area?
Chris Cleven, Planning Department, we do, as you know, we do have a citywide financing tool called the Utilities D C L, and it's intended to be all-encompassing. It captures all of the utility needs established through a 10-year D C L capital program. And the D C L is the primary tool for funding utility growth needs. In terms of density bonusing contributions, there are set allocated categories that density bonusing can be, can be allocated towards. Underground infrastructure is not one of the permitted categories. Transportation is, but underground infrastructure is not. So there's some limitations to this tool.
Okay, and then have we looked at doing density bonusing for in-kind? So predetermined density bonus for a certain amount of square footage for affordable housing? So have we looked at if we wanted to give density bonusing for a nonprofit to go to 12-story? Could we put that as a density bonus, recognizing that they would have to deliver the affordability instead of a bonus rate?
Chris Cleven, Planning Department, again, we do, we do actually have two ways we can bonus within existing zones. We can bonus for these density bonusing contributions. That's what we're talking about today. This is the, the report before you. There's another type of bonusing we do, and those are called relaxations for in-kind amenities. And we do, we have a number of zones. Some of them are inclusionary housing zones, like the C five zone, for example. And there are other zones, like the C three A, for example, where you can bonus for the, if amenities are included onsite, reintegrated into a development. But those are not, that's not the same thing as this tool, which is our cash contributions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council. There are no speakers listed, so I'll make my first call for speakers to this item. 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445 pound. And I'll ask the clerks, is there anybody on the line to speak to this item?
No speakers on the line, Mayor.
Okay, the second call, same numbers, same code. This is on Twitter and available on the live stream. I'll check again, clerks, anybody in the chamber or on the line?
Nobody in the chamber or on the line, Mayor.
Okay, third call, same numbers, 1-833-353-8610, Brisbane code 1061445 pound. We're going to take a five-minute recess. It is 6:35. I'll come back at 6:40 to see if anybody's phoned in. Thanks so much, Council. We'll see you in five. I don't either, so. I guess they didn't.
Possibly didn't return from the break.
Yeah, I see, I see, Council Hardwick, yeah, not. One of her. So they're, they're not disconnected. They're just not here. Just give it another minute. There's Council Weave, Council Weave, you're, or voting? Or voting, Council Weave? Thank you. Quite know what to do here. Well. Okay. I mean, I think we're just going to have to mark Council Dejanova and Council Hardwick as absent. And so that, that report has passed unanimously. Oh. Council Hardwick, we just, we just marked you as absent with that vote. And we're going to move on to the next item, item two. Rezoning on 4575 Ash Street and 32369.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Council Dejanova. I was, I was asking for a vote assist in favor, but I was muted, double muted, I think so. I'm not sure if that can be recorded.
We're on, we're on item two now. We mark you as.
I understand, so could, could I move a motion of reconsideration then? My apologies. I, I was trying to ask for that, but.
It did pass unanimously, so.
I understand, but I was here for the item, and I heard it and having technical difficulties, so we'd want to make sure my vote was recorded.
We have a lot of stuff to get through tonight. You can move a motion if you want. That's your privilege. But otherwise, we're just moving on to item two.
Okay, if you prefer that we just move on to item two, that's what I'll do. But I would hope that next time you would note that I'm not absent, and you would ask for my vote, just like anyone else's, because I wasn't absent for the vote, and I was noted at rule call. So I thought.
Not time for debate.
Parliamentary procedure?
Nope, we're going to move on to the next item.
So there's no point of parliamentary procedure?
Council Dejanova, we're moving on to the next item. Thank you.
If I could move a motion of reconsideration?
Okay, do we have a second here for that?
Second.
Oh, who is that?
Hardwick.
Thank you, Council Hardwick. So we have a motion of reconsideration of that vote on the floor. Clerks, if you can take us to a queue. I believe this is debatable, but not.
I could have a point of privilege, vote assist in favor.
I'm talking.
I do need a vote assist in favor, Mayor.
Council Dejanova. Clerks, I'd like to clarification if this requires a two-thirds or unanimous vote to reconsider?
Mayor, this is, just requires a majority is debatable. And once, if adopted, can be reopened for debate.
Okay, thanks. So if anybody would like.
Point of privilege, please, if I could be added to queue, Mayor.
Yep. There you go, Council Dejanova, the five minutes.
Mayor, sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
A motion to reconsider, an adopted motion, may only be made by a council member who voted with the majority.
Ah, right. So we can't, I'm sorry, then so you can't move that to Council Dejanova?
Point of parliamentary procedure?
I don't know.
Could Council Hardwick, who.
No, we can't do that. No, no, we cannot be doing that kind of negotiation. So we're moving on to the second item, which is the rezoning on 4575 Ash Street and 623 to 693 West 30th Avenue. Anybody wish to declare conflict of interest on this item? Nope? Okay, clerk, I read the application and summary of correspondence received. Thanks.
This is an application by Con West Group to rezone 4575 Ash Street and 623 to 693 West 30th Avenue from R S one, Single Detached Houses and Duplexes District, to R M eight A, Multiple Dwelling District, to permit a townhouse development with a maximum floor space ratio of 1.20. If rezoning is approved, a subsequent development permit process will entail a review of a proposed form of development. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. No correspondence has been received on this application since it was referred to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments.
Thanks. So there's speakers to this item. The phone number is on Twitter and on live stream. We have Amy McDonald here, the rezoning, from the rezoning center. I don't think there are speakers to this item, Council, so we could wait the presentation. I'll just ask it, does anybody want to see it? I don't hear anyone, so we'll just move to questions. Any questions for staff on this item?
Look, the recommendations, Mayor, seeing nobody on the queue.
Oh, I do see Council Weave on, Council Weave?
All right, thanks.
Up to five. Thanks, Council Hardwick. Privy, Council Weave, go ahead.
Yeah, question of staff kind of follows on an earlier question, and that is, did staff do a performa? Or because there's a density bonus zone contribution, was that suffice to ensure that we are getting the contributions expected under the zoning?
Yes, thank you, Councilor Amy McDonald, rezoning planner. As there's no form of development proposed at the rezoning stage, at the development permit stage, the rate that is in effect for density bonus zone contributions will apply at the time that the applicant submits their application.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So. I need to make my three, three calls for the public though first, before we do that.
Sorry about that.
No, no problem, thanks. So anybody wants to speak to this? 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445 pound. And this is my first call for speakers. Clerks, anybody on the line for this item?
No one on the line, Mayor.
Okay, second call, 1-833-353-8610. And all the rest of the stuff is on Twitter and on the live stream. Anybody in person or online?
No speakers in person or on the line, Mayor.
Thanks, okay, we'll make the third call. The numbers are on Twitter and on live stream. It is 6:50. We'll take a break until 6:55 and come back and see if anybody else has phoned in. Okay, thanks. See you at 6:55. And come back and see if anybody else has phoned in, okay, thanks, see you at six fifty five.
This is a test of the audio system, this is a test of the audio system.
Mayor, you may be on mute.
You missed some of my best bits there. We, yeah, we, we don't have anybody on the list to speak to this one, but we do have Alicia Dejarle from the rezoning center. Would anybody like to see the presentation? I don't see anybody on the list, so we can move to. Is the applicant, any questions from council staff, please put yourself on the list. I don't see anybody, oh, I think I did see somebody, councillor Weave, go ahead, up to five.
Yeah, I have a quick question, in the back of the report, it says the public amenity will be affordable housing, I'm just wondering why the DCL is only sent to affordable housing on this project? And not to parks or childcare or any of the other DCL eligible?
Hi councillor Weave, it's Alicia Dejarle here, rezoning planner, the CAC is allocated to the Affordable Housing Reserve, not, not the DCL. And the Affordable Housing Reserve takes rezoning CACs and is allocated to affordable housing objectives throughout the city. It's a citywide fund, but funding is contributed depending on certain areas, and it's primarily for land acquisition and delivery of affordable housing and spending determined through the standard for your capital plan and annual budgets.
Okay, I just haven't seen a lot of reports coming to council that, that specify where the CAC is going, is this something we're gonna see in a lot of reports moving forward?
It's for certain projects, so within the Canby Corridor Plan, Marple Plan and other like plan areas, they have community benefit strategies, and in some areas, like the Little Mountain adjacent area, CACs are allocated to this Affordable Housing Reserve Fund. And so it's not an increasing, it's just a standard policy for certain smaller areas with rezoning policy.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you, we've got councillor Dominado, next.
Oh, thanks mayor, it's just a quick question to staff about the build and whether there's retail at grade, I, I couldn't see that in the report, maybe I missed it.
On this application, thank you for your question, on this application, commercial isn't required at grade, it is optional, and so in this case, they've opted not to have it.
Was, was there any conversation around that and, and not including that?
This was an optional, it wasn't a requirement, the applicant did come in with just reach, with a, with just residential on the ground floor, it, it wasn't something staff could require, just by the way the rezoning policy is written.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks so much, councillor Kirby Young, next.
Yeah, a quick one, councillor Dominado asked my question on the retail and I'll just follow up on that, is it required in terms of, spare the question being, nothing further hollowing out of the Punjabi market further south, is it, is retail required for redevelopment closer to the core blocks of the Punjabi market?
South of the site is the Little Mountain site, it's further up from the Punjabi market, retail is required on the Little Mountain site, fronting Main Street, so there will be retail there.
On the frontage, because this one is on the side street and that's the distinction?
Sorry, can you clarify?
Sorry, is it because this sits also on the side street, is that the distinction, I'm just trying to, I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of the character of supporting retail to the north and south of the site and where there are requirements and where there are not here, just in terms of that we don't end up with another neighborhood like the Canby Corridor where there are no locally serving retailer amenities?
Right, I see, Little Mountain site does require retail on the buildings fronting Main Street and that would be delivered through in the future. The blocks north of Little Mountain do not have a requirement currently and there's no rezoning policy that requires retail, however, there is existing retail along those sites. And that's something staff will consider when future applications are received.
Okay, was there any discussion, just to be clear, with this applicant at, at all with respect to retail, or is that not part of the the process?
In this location, it's a choice of use, so it is something the applicant can decide. And we haven't had conversation about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, I'm just gonna see now if the applicant team is available or would like to speak or answer questions.
I'm Seamus Sacks from Antec Architecture, I'm here if there are any questions.
Great, and just, sorry council, I usually group the, the staff and applicant together, I'll do that next time, but so if you have any questions, councillor Swanson to the applicant or staff at the stage.
Yeah, to the applicant, I see that there's three tenants who are gonna be evicted in order to make this building, and I'm wondering if there's any way to get you to provide them with right of first refusal or provide them with some new housing that they can afford in the new building.
Applicant?
Leon, are you here to answer that question?
Just, anybody on your team, applicant, that can answer that question?
Yeah, Seamus Sacks Architect, I see them on the line, maybe they're having difficulty speaking, we're not part of the tenant relocation plan, so I wouldn't be able to answer that question.
Okay. Our councillor Swanson. Do you wanna direct that to staff?
I'm not talking about the tenant relocation plan as the city, in terms of the city's policy, I'm talking about something above and beyond that, like could we actually get these tenants some housing they can afford in the new building or housing in a different building until the new building is built or both? Would that be a, it seems to me like that would be a good thing, there's only three tenants evidently and there's thirty seven condos happening here, so it wouldn't be a huge proportion of the building.
Anybody from the applicant team? Able to answer that? Hazard an answer?
It looks like Leon does have his hand up, I'm not sure if they're trying, they, they, the developer would be the one to answer the questions.
Okay, I don't, I do see the hand up as well, but not hearing. Don't think you're gonna get your answer councillor Swanson.
My time is running out with silence.
I know, so. So I guess we'll, did you have any other questions?
No, that's it.
Okay, thanks so much. Let's see here, council, we're going to, sorry, I just, that's it for questions, so we don't have any speakers to this item. But if you wanna speak to it, this is my first call, one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code one oh six one four four five pound. And I'm just gonna check clerks, is there anybody on the line to speak to this item?
No speakers in the, on the line or in the chamber, mayor.
Okay, and second call, let's, again, anybody show up in the last five seconds?
No speakers, mayor.
Okay, third call, the, the information is on Twitter and on the live stream to participate, it is seven oh eight, so we'll come back at seven thirteen to see if there's anybody else to speak to this item, okay, council, seven thirteen. Councillor, get back in front of your cameras. I'm at 7:13 now, so I will check with the clerks. Is there anybody else on the line?
No speakers on the line or in the chamber, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're gonna close the speakers list now on this item. And as few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, we're gonna close the receipt of public comments. I'm gonna ask the applicant, do you have any closing comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks. The staff have any closing comments?
No closing comments, Mayor. I'd just like to remind councillor to move a motion for this amendment at the end of the present.
Yeah, with the yellow memo. Okay, any questions from councillor to staff? I don't see any. So can we have someone move this with the yellow memo, please?
That with a yellow memo, councillor Carr?
Thank you councillor Carr.
Councillor Dominado.
Thank you councillor Dominado, and we'll go on to debate. Anybody have anything to say to this item? I don't see anyone, so we'll move to the vote. Oh, drat. Another two councillors who... Oh, there's councillor Kirby Young, thank you. For the vote. I don't... Clerks, do you see councillor Dejanova? I don't see her on the queue at all.
Mayor, I don't see her on the call anymore.
Okay, so let's marker is absent, councillor Dejanova's absent. Thanks so much. And that passes with councillor Swanson and councillor Hardwick in opposition. So we're moving on to item four, Regulation redesign, simplifying height regulations and miscellaneous amendments. I'd like to remind councillor that we need to move the recommendation for this item together with the yellow memorandum dated July 2nd from the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability entitled Regulation redesign, simplifying height regulations and miscellaneous amendments. Let's need, we just need, sorry, I've jumped the gun here. We just needed time to get some staff change for this item. But while we're here, does anybody wish to declare a conflict of interest on this item? No, okay. So perhaps we can, while staff are loading up, we can have the clerk read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability to amend the zoning and development bylaw to simplify height regulations by introducing definitions for height and decorative roof by updating the definition for base surface and by amending section 10.18 height to provide more flexibility for access to rooftop amenity spaces and to make other housekeeping amendments to clarify wording in various bylaws and land use documents to correct inadvertent errors, update references and improve the administration of the bylaws. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval set out, as set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda as well as the memorandum dated July 2nd, 2021. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments for pieces of correspondence in opposition. This represents all correspondence received up to 4:00 PM today.
Thank you so much. We don't have anybody on the, on the, this was one second here. Yeah, we also have a yellow memo on this one, councillor, just so you know, that was sent to you prior to this introduction of this item. And we don't have any speakers on this, this item. But we do have Heather Burpee here from the senior planner to speak to this. Does anybody want to see the, the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do that. We can move over to Heather Burpee and if you want to walk us through these 11 slides, are that great?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councillor. I'm Heather Burpee, Senior Planner with the Regulation redesign project. And I'm going to present our proposed amendment to height regulations in the zoning and development bylaw to clarify them and provide more flexibility for rooftop features, including roof decks and mechanical equipment. And also several miscellaneous amendments are being proposed to correct errors and references. And typically, these types of amendments are brought forward to council twice a year. And this set of amendments being brought forward as a package for efficiency and to be respectful of council's time. So there's a redlined version of the proposed height amendments in appendix K of the report with a minor amendment noted in the yellow memo. And a table in section two of the report describes the miscellaneous amendments to the various bylaws. And appendix I details the amendments to the guideline and policy documents. So the proposed amendments to height are in response to feedback we received through extensive engagement with industry, the public and staff in 2018 and 2019 to identify issues with the city's land use regulations. We heard consistently that it's hard to find and understand regulations and that there are conflicts and inconsistencies in interpretation. And height regulations were specifically identified as not being clear and that a definition of height is needed. And so these proposed amendments are incremental changes toward more simplified zoning regulations. And in terms of engagement on the proposed height amendments specifically, we worked with Planning and Development Services staff and with our external advisory group of technical experts. We also hosted engagement on Shaker City in March and had 525, 21 people viewing the information and received 26 comment form submissions. We also held virtual information session with Mandarin and Cantonese speaking designers and builders and shared newsletters that were translated into Punjabi and simplified in traditional Chinese. And there are more details on the engagement in appendix J of the report. And I'll just note that we did revise and simplify the proposed height amendments based on the feedback we received through the engagement work. And so we're proposing to consolidate regulations on how height is calculated into a new definition. So it's easier to find and understand how height's measured. For decorative roof, we're creating a definition to clarify what it is. And we're also proposing updates to the definition for base surface, again, really to consolidate regulations into the existing definition to provide more clarity and have the information located in one place. Another issue with height regulations that was identified through engagement was the lack of flexibility for various rooftop features such as shared amenity spaces and screening for mechanical equipment. The intent of these amendments is really to provide opportunities for usable rooftop space and access to these spaces. And so we are proposing amendments to permitted height variances to remove a limitation that restricts any additional height to one-third of the building width. There will still be an overall limit of 10% of the roof area. We're removing, proposing to remove a 1.1 meter height restriction for architectural features and provide more flexibility for rooftop access structures and rooftop amenity structures that are within a height of 3.6 meters. And this will be especially helpful for access to roof decks on townhouses. We're also allowing screening material that reduces visual impacts to be excluded from height calculations. And as noted in the yellow memo that was circulated, these variances to height are applied at the discretion of the Director of Planning who must take into consideration any impact on views, noise, shadowing and privacy. And as there's been confusion about how to calculate height, particularly for unique site circumstances, staff are also preparing a bulletin that will clarify how the regulations are administered. It's written in plain language and includes graphics and it will be available online for staff and applicants. So everyone has the information and there's consistent interpretation of regulations. And in terms of the miscellaneous amendments, I'm just gonna go over a few. So an amendment's being proposed to section 1023A, which is a section that enables the Director of Planning to vary height, yards, building depth and design regulations to accommodate thicker walls and other passive house features. These provisions are already in place for one and two family dwellings. The proposed amendments would enable infill dwellings the same opportunities when they're meeting passive house standards. And the proposed amendment to the RM8 and RM8A district schedule would bring regulations in line with the intended form of the development in the district, which is also encouraged in the guidelines. So the RM8 and 8A zoning allows townhouses in a courtyard configuration, which is a row at the front of the site and a row at the back along the lane, as you can see in the diagram. On wider sites, it also encourages breaking up the townhouse buildings to reduce the massing along the street and along the lane to achieve a better form of development. So for courtyard development on larger sites, this results in multiple buildings on a site, again, as illustrated in the diagram. The proposed changes are to correct the wording in the district schedule to clarify that more than one townhouse building is allowed on the site and make it consistent with the intent of the zone. And then finally, to correct various errors in grammar, numbering, correct references, miscellaneous amendments are proposed to various bylaws and guideline of policy documents. All these amendments are detailed in the body of the report and in appendix I. And that concludes the presentation.
Great, thanks so much. Councillor Hardwick, you're up for five minutes. Questions to staff as there's no applicant in this, this report?
Terrific, thank you very much. We received correspondence from the Coalition of Vancouver Neighborhoods expressing their concern about so many different unrelated issues being combined under one report as an omnibus. They argue that changes to height regulations are complex and would have impacts on the form of development. So should be in a report of their own, for example. How does staff respond to this criticism? This is not one that has come up before about the, the difficulty of putting so many things into a report that is dealing with, you know, everything from infill to height to laneway housing. Could you please give us a respond? They've, they've encouraged us to send this report back to staff. When I've tried this before, I haven't gotten very far. So how do you respond again to the combining of unrelated items into one report that would have a change of form of development, for example?
It's Heather Burpee again with the planning department. We have, well, there's two sets of amendments that you're looking at for height and the miscellaneous amendments that typically come forward in a group form, which are minor changes. We're trying to be efficient with council's time and respectful that these are apparently minor changes. The, we haven't received any concern, we do public consultation around the height amendments. We're happy to speak with anybody if there are specific concerns around those, but we have not received any inquiries.
So you haven't received any inquiry from the Coalition of Vancouver Neighborhoods Group on this, on this report?
Not specific to any of the regulations, no questions around how the regulations are changing or what the specific impacts might be. We did have people participate in our survey and give us feedback and those, that feedback has been incorporated into the proposed amendments.
Okay, thank you for your response.
Hey, thank you. I don't see any more questions, so we have no speakers to this item. So I will call for the first time to the public if you'd like to speak to this item. It's 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445 pound. And that's the first call. Staff, anybody on the line or in the chambers for this item?
No speakers on the line or in chamber, Mayor.
Thanks. We'll do the second call. All the information is on Twitter or on live stream if you want to participate. And back to the clerks, anybody, anybody there?
No speakers, Mayor.
Okay, and we're on our third call. 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445 pound. It is 7:27, councillor. We will come back at 7:32 to move along on this item. We'll see you in five minutes. We'll see you in five minutes. Great, that passes with Counselor Hardwick in opposition. Okay, thanks, council. We're moving to item five, which is the rezoning at 1190 Burrard Street. Ask, just to remind folks, if you have a conflict of interest, please declare it now. And we'll have the clerk read the application and summary of correspondence.
This is an application by ZGF Architecture, Inc., three-zone, 1190 Burrard Street from downtown district to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a 17-story mixed-use building with 154 social housing units, a height of 54.31 meters or 178.19 feet, and a floor space ratio of 9.11 are recommended. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval as subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. Two pieces of correspondence in support, one piece of correspondence in opposition, and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 4:00 p.m. today.
Thanks very much. We have Carly Rosenblatt here from the rezoning center to present this item. We do have speakers to item number five, so let's have the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Carly Rosenblatt, rezoning planner for this application, which proposes to rezone a city site at 1190 Burrard Street under the Downtown Official Development Plan. The subject site shown in red is made up of five lots at the northeast corner of Davie Street and Burrard Street. The lots are zoned downtown district and fall within the Downtown Official Development Plan. Surrounding sites are also zoned downtown district. The site is approximately 1,254 square meters in size and occupied with one and two-story residential buildings with retail at grade and a surface parking lot. On the left, there's a view from Burrard Street looking northeast and to the right, the bird's eye view of the site. Surrounding buildings contain high-density residential and mixed-use commercial buildings ranging in height from nine to 13 stories. Across the street to the west, there's an existing community garden with a current rezoning proposal for a 47-story mixed-use building. There are no residential tenants at the site and it does not include any historic features. The site's located in the downtown south neighborhood, which contains a variety of neighborhood amenities. From the map, you can see parks, community spaces, institutional sites, and childcare locations within approximately a 15-minute walk of the site. There's access to Nelson Park, Emery Barnes Park, and other outdoor recreation spaces. St. Paul's Hospital's nearby and childcare is provided at approximately 13 sites within a 1 km distance. In addition, there's multiple shopping districts, bicycle routes, and transit routes nearby the subject site. Rezoning potential for the site is guided by the Downtown Official Development Plan, which permits social housing, social service center, and commercial space. Under the plan, increased density is permitted through rezoning to assist with delivery of social housing. Where social housing is provided, Area M of the downtown ODP allows for a density up to five FSRs and through a development permit, a height up to 300 feet is permitted for corner lots. The site would also contribute towards social housing goals identified in the Housing Vancouver Strategy. This application is proposing to rezone from downtown district to CD1 to permit a 17-story mixed-use building. The application was first received on December 11, 2019, and then held by the applicant pending a review of construction costs. In February 2021, revised plans were received. The application is part of a larger seven-city-site portfolio with Vancouver Affordable Housing Agency, BAH, and awarded to Community Land Trust as a nonprofit developer. The proposal includes 154 social housing units intended to be managed by the McLaren Housing Society, a housing provider that focuses primarily on individuals and couples living with HIV/AIDS. It will meet the city's definition of social housing with a minimum of 30% of the units rented to households with incomes which fall under the BC Housing income limits levels, hills, and the city and its partners are seeking to deliver a deeper level of affordability should the project be successful in obtaining partner funding from BC Housing or CMHC. A social service center is intended to provide a new space for community, a nonprofit organization that operates as a resource center to support queer, transgender, and two-spirit people. The proposal also includes commercial use at grade, an overall density of 9.11 FSR, and a proposed height of 54.3 meters. Parking is accessed from the lane and is being provided as per the parking bylaw. Common outdoor amenity space for residents is located on the third and seventh story, which includes a children's playground. As part of the Restart Smart Vancouver initiative in response to COVID-19, the project will contribute to approximately 538 new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. The proposal includes a social service center that is located on the first and second floor of the building. The space is intended to be occupied by communities known as BC's Queer, Trans, and Two-Spirit Resource Centers. The organization provides support services such as free counseling, education, and refers people to queer support specialists. They offer one-on-one peer support, social groups for youth and seniors, as well as advisory services and educational resources. The space is intended to include office and multipurpose space to accommodate gatherings, workshops, and educational events, as well as art displays and performances. Following submission of the rezoning application, a city-hosted in-person open house was held January 20, 2020, and attended by approximately 67 people. The application drawings and details were made available online following application submission, along with my contact information in a form to submit feedback. In total, we received approximately 34 pieces of feedback, as well as one petition from residents at London Place, a strata building to the east. They opposed the proposal because of safety concerns and crime they associate with social housing. Their petition contained approximately 47 signatures. In general, people were supportive of the proposal and referenced provision of affordable housing based for community, dedication of community amenities, along with building height, density, and massing. Key themes of concern related to neighborhood safety and crime, saturation of social housing in the neighborhood, and the number of parking spaces. Council, the proposal will comply with the parking bylaw. Given the feedback, staff have reviewed the concerns and have taken this into consideration in their review of the project. In summary, staff recommends approval of this application to rezone 1190 Burrard Street from downtown district to CD1, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report as it meets intent of the downtown ODP with respect to the delivery of social housing. If approved, the application would contribute a new social service center intended for community, commercial space, and 154 new social housing units to help reach the cities' goals identified in the Housing Vancouver Strategy. Both staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I'm going to ask if the applicant team is here to speak to this application?
We are. Mayor Stuart. It's Heather Olend from the Vancouver Affordable Housing Agency.
Great. Would you like to speak to her or just answer questions?
Briefly, if you don't mind.
No problem at all. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm very pleased to be here this evening with Tiffany DeZeta of the Community Land Trust and members of the Design, Development, and Operations Teams, who Tiffany will introduce in a moment. The social housing and community space project at 1190 Burrard Street is an example of what we can accomplish when we work together with our not-for-profit partners in the housing sector. The Community Land Trust was awarded this project as part of a portfolio of city projects that now has one housing project completed and people moving in, another about to begin construction, two about to submit for building permits, and another readying for a development permit application. Tonight, we are here to ask for your consideration at this public hearing so we can proceed with developing 154 homes under BC Housing's Community Housing Fund, allowing for 20% of the units to be rented at shelter rate, 50% at hills, and 30% at market. As you know, this level of affordability is much needed in our city and is very challenging to provide without significant contributions from senior government. CLT and BAH have been working very closely with BC Housing to ensure this project meets the social, economic, and environmental requirements of both the city and BC Housing. This project will be a valuable addition to the social housing stock in the neighborhood and the city as a whole. I would like to thank the Planning and Engineering Departments for working with us to bring the project to this stage. Their ongoing evaluation and advice has been invaluable and their thoroughness and timeliness has been critical to the project's success to date. I would also like to thank the Community Land Trust for their expertise and leadership with respect to the delivery and operation of affordable housing. Bringing social housing projects to fruition is challenging and their dedication to providing housing in Vancouver is welcome. Our collaboration and partnership with the not-for-profit housing sector is an essential component of achieving the goals of the Housing Vancouver Strategy, of which this 154-home project is an important part. Thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to Tiffany.
Hi, yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't really have much to add to staff and Heather's comments there, but I'm the, I'm the Executive Director of Community Land Trust and I do just want to echo the support that we've received from Heather and Ryan and the team at BAH and city staff. And that we do have a large team behind us as well. Some of the names were mentioned, but I would just like to thank them and bring them attention to council. But with McLaren Housing Society and Community, our development partners New Commons Development, our contractor Kinder Construction, and our architect, ZGF Architects, that have all worked diligently to try to make a multi kind of complex site work with housing and community space and retail space. On, I wouldn't say it's an easy site to develop, it's a small site, but and trying to maximize the city's land use asset as well for affordable housing and of course, our partnership with BC Housing that is going to deliver an unprecedented level of affordability, as Heather explained as well. So we just look forward to hopefully this moving forward through the process and beginning to get on site later this year to start construction.
Great, thank you. Thank you. So councilors, you can ask questions to the staff or applicants. And I have Counselor Swanson on the queue for up to five minutes.
Hey, thanks. So this is a city-owned site, right?
Yes, it is.
And so is the city going to be leasing the site to the CLT? Is that the deal?
Yes, that's correct.
So when the lease terms come to council, if we want it to be more affordable than 3070, we could hopefully negotiate for a cheaper lease? Is that a possibility?
It's Heather Olend, Counselor Swanson from, from BAH. The lease terms have come to council for this project. It's a 99-year lease and the affordability is prescribed by the BC Housing Community Housing Fund, which is 20% at shelter rate, 50% at hills, and 30% at market.
Oh, okay. So that's good. So the other question I have is about the, when you talked about the community input and how the, the people who oppose the project didn't want, want the neighborhood to be saturated with social housing and didn't want the crime that they associate with social housing. So what I'm wondering is, do we have a way of countered, countering these stereotypes and this kind of discrimination against people that live in social housing? Like, we wouldn't use the word saturated if it were condos. And we wouldn't associate crime with, you know, some other form of rental housing or something. And it's, so it's a stereotype, right? So have staff been thinking about how to kind of upend that kind of thinking? I don't know if we can.
Thank you very much, Counselor Swanson. Yes, we have. And I think, you know, I think that stereotyping and stigmatization with respect to affordable housing is, is an ongoing challenge. I think people have assumptions and, and, you know, it's very clear, especially with this mixed-use project, that, you know, people who require affordable housing are, are all kinds of people. From, you know, seniors to people with disabilities, to new Canadians, to people with lower incomes. And I, you know, certainly when we have the opportunity to, to meet and talk with members of the public and neighbors, you know, we, it's important to, to listen and hear what, and hear their concerns and, and also explain, explain the, the purpose of the project and about the people who will be living there.
Okay, thanks very much. It sounds like a great project.
Thank you. Just checking. Yeah, Counselor Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you. I, I know there's been so much that's gone into this project. It's been years in the making, but so I'm clear on all of it. I just want to address one question that a member of the public brought forward. It was with respect to the sort of colorful panels on the lower floors, those beautiful sort of rainbow colors. And the question that was raised was if they are actually light panels or just sort of colored or reflective glass? And just in the context of wondering about any possible light pollution and the safe, the problems would be, I think, overly zealous illumination of the Safeway that was built further down Davie was referenced, where that was quite problematic for people to sleep. I know it had to be adjusted afterwards. So I wonder if you can speak about to that, what looks to be a beautiful and colorful rainbow-like glass feature, but is, if it's going to be illuminated and to what degree?
Hey, Counselor Kirby Young, this is Daniel Wilson with ZGF Architects. Just in response to the question there, the glass fins are actually not illuminated by light. What you're seeing there is kind of a light reflection. So basically, the design is an interlayer between the glass. It's a reflective coating. It's called a diacrylic film. And basically, what it does is it picks up different colour spectrums of the sun as it moves around the site. And so those fins will be dynamic in their colours throughout the day.
Okay. That's great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thanks so much. I don't see any more questions from councillors. So we'll move to the speakers list now. We've got the first speaker registered to speak is Chris Morrissey. Chris Morrissey, are you on the line?
I'm on the line.
Great. Please go ahead. Up to five minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to come before Mayor and Council to address you and to express our support for this rezoning application. I am the co-founder and currently board member of Rainbow Refugee Society. And while it's clear that a lot of the rezoning is connected to the housing component, there's also the Community Centre for Community. And that is a piece that we have particular concern and interest in. In early two thousands, I was actually an employee at Community, then known as the Centre. And during my eight years of employment, the then E D Donna Wilson worked with the City of Vancouver staff for the building of a new building for the L G B T Community Centre, establishing a new home for the L G B T Q S two S communities as a project that has been in the works for more than twenty years. In two thousand, I, along with several others, founded Rainbow Refugee Committee in response to the needs of the community. As a small grassroots organisation, we needed a place to hold our drop-in sessions. We approached the Centre who generously opened their space for us. Soon after, we began holding our drop-in sessions for L G B T Q individuals who experienced persecution in their home countries and were afraid to return. And as volunteers, we provided and continue to provide them with information and support about making a refugee claim. We held regular monthly sessions and month after month and year after year, participation increased until the time of the pandemic and the average attendance was often fifty. We outgrew the meeting space that was available. When we became a society, we're now Rainbow Refugee Society, the Board of Directors held our monthly meetings at Van City Credit Union Community Space, in part because the space in community is not accessible. As a not-for-profit and an organisation that provides services to a significant number of the more vulnerable members of our communities, we desperately need a larger place to gather. We also require a space that is accessible, which the current space is not. When a previous city council committed to developing a building that included space for a community centre and housing, I approached a councillor about Rainbow Refugee Society being partners with the housing to be built. We have a commitment from McLaren Housing to provide a limited number of space for refugee claimants and refugees. Finally, having this new building will provide an accessible space for all members of the queer community to gather. So we heartily support this application for rezoning so that the city of Vancouver continues to be a place where L G B T Q two S people find support and continues to welcome refugees. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comments. I don't see anyone in the queue for questions. So just again, thank you so much for your participation and I'll be moving on to the next speaker, who is Anup Gill. Anup Gill, speaker number three, Anup Gill.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to chat. My name is Anup Gill. I'm the newly appointed co-executive director here at Community. I have had the great privilege of getting to know the work and community members our staff have helped support during this unprecedented year. If you don't mind, I'd like to share a few unique moments from our stakeholders. One of the programmes we have at Q is our youth programme. Our staff and volunteers create programming around youth drop-in and case management-intensive needs, one-on-one youth engagement and youth counselling events. In COVID especially, we geared our energies in creating more sustainable, lasting relationships. I would like to share a narrative from a parent who provided us feedback around their child's engagement at Q. I wanted to let you know that Jay pretty much floated down the stairs after your chat. It was like a weight of the world had been lifted off their shoulders. There were no words to thank you. I feel like we had all these beautiful beads, Jay coming out, a supportive system coming together, et cetera. But we were missing the chain to link it all together to make it into a necklace. It feels like you are that chain, like everything else is being pulled together with the experiences, knowledge and understanding that you are sharing with us. Thank you for answering me when I reached out and thank you for supporting Jay. Community provides a unique, knowledgeable experience for youth who are part of our queer, trans and indigenous communities in navigating gender, peer connections, supports, languages and services, both for themselves and for their guardians and parents. Overall, in our youth programme this year, we have serviced a hundred and seventy-one youths with around two hundred and fifty-one unique interactions. Also, we have served two hundred and seventy-eight caregivers and services connected to our youth programme. Along with that, we also have a seniors programme, peer groups, counselling programmes, volunteer engagement programmes, education and facilitations, all centred around queer competency and many more advocacy and support services. Furthermore, recently, we undertook a survey which indicated our youth programme relevancy, especially in our Lower Mainland area. Around ninety percent of the youth reported that the programmes offered at Community were safe spaces. And nearly ninety-five percent of them strongly agreed with the statement, "It is okay to be themselves" at Community. As a testament to the strength, resourcefulness and innovation of our staff and volunteers, we have been able to offer programmed services and a sense of community to our L G B T Q two S I A plus folks all across the Lower Mainland and continue to cultivate partnerships and networks across the province. Despite our great accomplishments, the fact remains, our current building on Davie and Butte is a site that is far too inadequate to meet the growing needs and evolving needs of our Vancouver's queer, trans and two-spirited communities. Most significantly, our current space has a flight of twenty-three stairs upon arrival, without any access to a lift, ramp or elevator. As a human rights-based organisation, our work and that of the cities in supporting us has to date failed in supporting and holding space for our L G B T Q two S A I plus communities, especially those with disabilities and mobility challenges, including but not limited to those of our seniors programming. Moving into a new space allows us to better serve all our members of our community in an accessible, safe and proud environment. This includes potential partnerships with and holding indigenous queer, two-spirited spaces, accessible programming to otherwise unable community members. Having a proud and accessible and visible space with increased capacity for community rooms means more physical spaces can truly be a catalyst for profound social change than the city's space. Whether it's Q staff holding and hosting L G B T Q two S I plus newcomers and refugees, intergenerational events for seniors and youth, or hosting conferences, panels and public engagement to shift cultural conversations about queer, trans and two-spirit equity and justice movements. As we begin to plan our new space, we're excited for the opportunity and potential partnerships with McLaren Housing, Rainbow Refugee, Van City and many, many more to activate our space in a dynamic and authentic, meaningful way. For community, this space is hope. Hope that we will be increasing our current and future successes. Hope for queer, trans youth to feel accepted and needed in spaces. Hope for our seniors to be proud of their queer, trans, indigenous heritage. And lastly, hope for those who feel discriminated, unseen, unheard and greeted with kindness in a new space reflective of their bravery. New spaces means new acknowledgements for hope. If you have any other further questions around programming, feel free to come by as community is now open. Lastly, my invitation to youth city council is to join us for this new and exciting opportunity to centre all L G B T Q two S A I plus Vancouverites and support community in our mission to improve queer, trans and two-spirited lives today and for generations to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I don't see any questions from council for you, but I'd like to congratulate you on your new job and thanks for coming in this evening. We have our last registered speaker, Christopher Wallen. Christopher Wallen?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Chris Wallen. I am the Chair of the Board of Directors of Community and a resident of Vancouver. Our pronouns are he and him. I'll thank Chris and Anup for their presentation, so I will keep mine short. As already acknowledged, Community is B C's queer, trans and two-spirit resource centre and we are slated to be the anchor social service tenant in this building. As such, and with the long-term health and wellness of Vancouver's L G B T Q two S A I plus community in mind, I wholeheartedly support this rezoning application. My paid work is in the world of real estate development, so I have a particular appreciation for the efforts and the community it takes to get a project to this point of approval. I'd like to express my thanks to the staff and C L T who have been working on this project for the past eight years, along with their predecessors on the community board. Q staff, our community stakeholders, dialogue architects, Z G F architects and portico design, have all contributed to the process, community selection for this important tenancy and to the design of the community space. I'd also like to acknowledge that we are very grateful for the seven million dollars C A C provided through Alliance Properties Berard Place Project, which has enabled this relationship and specifically the funding for the space for community within this proposal. Community reaches broadly into a very, very diverse population of Vancouver and beyond with an obligation and recognition that this new space will allow us to better serve our entire community. Recognising that our current inaccessible space excludes many of our members from participating in person. Community's tenancy in this building will further solidify our ability to serve the L G B T Q two S A I plus community within Anchor and a community centre around and within which we can continue to strengthen our much-needed services and social change throughout Vancouver and across the province in a proudly queer, visible, accessible and importantly iconic location in the heart of Vancouver. Thank you for your time and I encourage you to support this project.
Thanks so much. I don't see any questions for you. So again, I'll just thank you for your time this evening. And now I'm going to move to my first call for speakers. One eight three 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 five three eight six one zero code one oh six one four four five hashtag. And I'm going to ask the clerks, is there anybody on the line for this item?
No additional speakers on the line or in chamber, Mayor.
Thanks. So second call, same thing. The number and codes are on Twitter and on a live stream. Anybody there, clerks?
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Okay, councillor, it is eight oh three. This is my third call for speakers. We'll give folks five minutes to call in. Eight oh three. So we'll be back at eight oh eight. Finish this item. Thanks so much. See you at eight oh eight. Yes, I am.
No speakers, Mayor.
Okay, so we're going to close the speakers list. And because we've had fewer no-public comments after five, we're going to close public comments and ask the applicant. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
No, thank you, Mayor Stuart.
Okay, thank you. Staff, have any closing comments?
No, we do not. Thank you.
Okay. I've got a few folks on the queue for questions to staff. Councillor Kirby Young, up to five minutes. Questions to staff.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to confirm the housing rates or affordability breakdown that I heard correctly. Because I know the report stipulates the statute requirement for thirty percent below. But did I hear correctly that the landed on mix is twenty percent at shelter, fifty percent at hills and thirty percent at market?
Yes, that's correct. From the funding provided for B C Housing, the project hasn't received final project approval from B C Housing. But every indication and working together, we anticipate that that final project approval will be forthcoming. Tiffany, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, so we are working through the approval process with B C Housing. We actually applied through the Community Housing Fund back in twenty eighteen and have been working with B C Housing, but we need to advance the design and obviously go through the municipal process so that we can advance this process with B C Housing. They're already invested with pre-development funds with us and are working with their design and tech team as well to make sure that the design also meets their requirements. So all indications is that this project is moving forward in partnership with B C Housing under the Community Housing Fund.
Okay. And so that would provide a pretty high level of affordability relative to other projects that we Okay, and so that would provide a pretty high level of affordability relative to other projects that we get while still providing a mixed income community. Is that a fair kind of summary? Of the outcome of where we are?
Yes, that is fair.
Okay, and then that funding, is that sufficient for the anticipated lease or life of the building or for a period of time? Like, how long would that affordability be achieved for?
The projects under the Community Housing Fund come with a 60-year operating agreement with the province to ensure that affordability. But as part of the long-term planning with these buildings is that after that 60-year operating agreement has expired, is that the community housing sector is able to still deliver that deep level of affordability, but doesn't necessarily need that help with the mortgage subsidy. Just as you pay down the principal debt on the first mortgage, the debt service that you carry on a per property should be less over time so that you're able to generate more funds, to have more accessible funds to deliver that affordability for the 99-year lease.
Okay, so it's really a huge win-win, a high level of affordability off the bat and then sustained and retained over time, correct?
Correct. Without this program, you wouldn't be able to afford to cover the mortgage and deliver this type of affordability year one. And that's why the program with the province is so great, because it gets that level of affordability that we need in the city and throughout the province on day one as people move in.
Wow, that's amazing. And 20 years it's been since the original genesis or discussions around this project? Is that right?
Yeah, the CLT entered in, in 2018 as part of the seven Baha sites with the awarding of that. But I do know that people in the, the community sector, being Community and McLaren, have been obviously advocating and trying to get something going on this site for, for much longer before we came involved. It's probably a good decade where people have been anxiously awaiting for this site to move forward.
Amazing. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Carr, up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, I'm, you know, just have one question. I was actually hoping to move this. This is my hood and it's very important in this neighborhood particularly. My, my question though has to do really with the petition that was received from the Strata Council to the east, and I'm just wondering if there's any way in the upcoming process that staff and the applicant can reach out to that strata? With my hope, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to ask for a, you know, you know, any kind of a, an agreement of any kind, but in some way to alleviate the fears and concerns that, that seem to have been raised by members of that Strata Council and, and to, you know, help support a much more welcoming attitude in the, in the local and surrounding area.
Thank you for your question. Through a development permit process, there's further opportunity for a public input and we can work with them at that stage as well to hear what their concerns are and how they can be addressed through the process.
And Tiffany, maybe you, or Kim could just add about how you work with local neighborhoods when you start new housing projects?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Kim jump in here too, but there is a process when we work with the city, city land assets and we do put together a teneting plan. And part of that teneting plan is about community outreach, you know, and getting to know our neighbors as well. Most often we fear, we find that fear is because there's an unknown and we're very at the preliminary stages of this of just, you know, a public hearing and the rezoning. But as the building gets more defined, obviously there'll be, be more opportunity for engagement with those neighbors. So I think Kim is available if she wants to jump in here too with some of their experience in working with community outreach.
Well, thanks Tiffany. Yes, I'm, I'm happy to jump in there. Hello, Mayor and Council. It's always a tricky question. I've worked in this business in Vancouver for nearly 30 years. We have had a building at 1249 House Street at Granville and, sorry, at Granville and Helken for 30 years. And we've quietly gone about our business and we've fitted into the community. We have relationships with businesses, the leasing of the store below us without any challenges. We also have a site at 1249 House Street, which was one of the city sites that was approved and opened back in 2013. We have a 12-story, 110 units of supportive housing there. And I think we all know how challenging the supportive housing buildings are to manage in Vancouver. There was, part of that development was a community process where we were asked to engage with local businesses, stratas within, I think, a two-block radius and create opportunities to meet on a regular basis. That took place, I believe, through the construction process and then we carried it on after occupancy. And people and businesses declined meeting with us because the feeling was that they were fine with us being in the, in the neighborhood. And I think people that know McLaren Housing know that we have a, a solid reputation in the community. We are all about housing people and creating community. And we also work with a number of other housing partners in the area and have units in their buildings for our folks. And all of our buildings, this would be the third, are within a five-minute walking distance. And so we have a lot of experience in managing in Granville South. But we're always open to people connecting with us and I'm more than happy Tiffany to assist in any way and Counselor Carr with allaying any concerns that the strata that have signed a petition may have. I'm more than happy to meet and chat with them anytime.
That's fantastic. I think it's about allaying fears that are unfounded, so I really appreciate that offer. Yeah.
Yeah, that's totally fair. It's hard for people when they don't have a true understanding of what social housing really means.
Great.
Thank you. Counselor Boyle, questions to staff, up to five minutes.
Um, thanks, Mayor. I also actually was just prepared to move it, but maybe if Counselor Carr wants to do that, I'd happily second the, the recommendation. Is, is there a memo attached with this one?
Just going to check with clerk. There's a memo?
There is no memo associated with this.
Thanks very much. Okay, so moved by Counselor Carr, seconded by Counselor Boyle. And go on to the main queue. Counselor Swanson, Counselor Swanson, up to five minutes for debate. If you unmute Counselor Swanson.
I just want to say that this is a excellent project. The affordability level, hopefully we can get that to 20 at shelter, 50 at hills. That's pretty good. The community centre, that's great. I just want to congratulate all the people that have been working on this. And let's, let's do it. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Boyle, up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. And I, I also am so excited about this project and particularly similar to Counselors Swanson want to lift up the and recognize the huge amount of work we heard over something like a decade that has gone into dreaming up this space and then doing all of the, all of the nitty-gritty work that it takes to bring it to this point. I, I have heard over many years the huge need for this new community space and the excitement for it. And I was fortunate to get to do a tour of some of McLaren Housing Society's existing housing early in this council term. I was so impressed by their staff, by the residents I got to meet with. So I'm just over the moon about this project and particularly during Pride to, to get to see it move forward is very exciting. So thanks to the team and everyone who's worked to make it happen and, and the space that will be available for Rainbow Refugee folks to, to become part of our community as well. All very exciting.
Thank you. Counselor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Thank you. Well, I agree this is an excellent project and it has a great many merits to it. Sadly, in the report and early on in the slides, there was reference to the Housing Vancouver Strategy as precedent under which this application is based. And I've repeatedly questioned the veracity of the Housing Vancouver Strategy and have requested quite publicly on multiple occasions the fundamental question, where is the data that is supporting this policy? And so sadly, I feel under this case, since it, it is reliant on the Housing Vancouver strategy that I cannot in good conscience vote in favor of this rezoning application, which is based on fundamentally flawed policy. So I will be forced to abstain, but I did want to explain my rationale for doing that. I don't want it to be misconstrued. My comments and my decision to abstain is based on my concerns around the larger policy, not on this project, which I do think is an excellent project. Thank you very much.
Counselor Dominado, up to five.
Uh, thanks, Mayor, and, and thanks to staff and the partners that have brought this to fruition. I, um, I want to speak just briefly, not so much to the housing, but really to the community centre and services that community will be able to deliver in that new space as well as the space for Rainbow Refugees. I had been involved in, in conversations as members of the 2S LGBTQ community prior to running and one of the conversations centred about the need for dedicated space to gather. Now, this project was well in the works long before I contemplated running and, and as we've noted, I think 20 years was mentioned in comments, but I, I think that it speaks to a need. It's been recognized by the community for some time and gathering spaces are really critical to building community safe spaces. And, and what I really noted in the executive director's comments was the intangible aspect of this is that it brings hope. And so, and so that's not just about housing, that's not just about space, but it is that intangible connectedness and what role this new community service centre will serve for community, the organisation, to be clear, and, and others. And, and that really resonated with me about how it will, it brings hope for many things and opportunity and connectedness. And I think that's so important in our city and particularly coming out of COVID. So I'm really pleased, like I echo Counselor Boyle's comments to see this coming forward and happy to support it.
Thank you so much. Counselor Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I won't take that long. Just to say that it's a, it's a heart project and really a beautiful thing. The only thing that not to like about this project for me is that it took 20 years. So I wish we could do a lot more of them and we could do them hopefully a lot more quickly. But this is a fantastic example and I'm excited to see it come to fruition. I think more than ever, the services are needed, especially for youth who are vulnerable at that stage. It's nice to see the spread across ages. And I don't think we can ever take these services for granted, especially when we just saw the Rainbow Crosswalk and Davie, Crosswalk and Davie Village defaced with white paint just a few days ago. So it's nice to have this sort of positive affirmation and in terms of providing long-term services for the community. And I think it's really fitting that it's actually coming on the cusp of the Pride celebrations that are going to be starting up this month. So I'm really happy to see the project and happy to see that. And thank you to all of the partners that have stepped up because it does literally take a village sometimes. No pun on the fact it's right near Davie Village, but it certainly takes partners coming together that are willing to kind of push the envelope. And we certainly see that in this project, in the range of community amenities it's delivering and the exceptional level of affordability. And so I'm very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bly, up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, and I too am very happy to speak in support of this project. It actually was one of the first development projects that I heard about long before being elected, before the campaign. And so it is, it is, and there, there was a moment, I think there's been some change in leadership at Community and some of the champions over the years. And so to see the project continue to be, be supported and also shepherded through the process speaks, I think, to the, the value and the need and the dedication of the organisation at the heart of, of this project, but cannot discount the, the work from staff to ensure that we could get the deepest level of affordability with the most amount of homes, affordable rental homes in 154 units. That's going to make this an incredibly robust community, particularly with the focus on family units in two and three bedroom. So I really appreciated the level of detail in the report related to how the livability around the family units particularly as well. But I think that as my colleagues have commented on, it's very, the timing of this particular project with Pride and also it, it goes without saying that COVID has had a really difficult impact on the queer community and particularly seniors and young people who found a lot of their services were impacted due to COVID. So although this is going to take time to build, there is hope and space that will be provided through this development. And I think as the council, we can feel very proud about our role to approve this, the small role that we have to approve this, but really to those that brought this project to life. And there'll be a lot of happy people, I would say, in the community when they see this start to break ground. So thanks so much again to staff and to the applicant and to the partnerships that made this happen.
Thank you. Counselor Fry.
Yeah, just echoing all my colleagues in, in, in supporting this and just recognizing the long struggle that it has been to get here and, and really, you know, around community as finding a real sort of home that's not just that space on Pewt Street that is so kind of threadbare and well-loved, but, but this is, this is a really significant endeavour. And, you know, I, I was thinking a lot about, about the people who have come before and even when I was, I remember fundraising for the first McLaren house back in the eighties when it was an actual house, house. And we would pull our tips and put it together for, for McLaren House and other ventures. When AIDS was, was really just starting to, to really devastate the scene in the late 1980s and, and the work that's gone into this and the people that have come before, this is long, long overdue. And I was thinking about our old friend, many on this council, Jamie Lee, who left us a couple of years ago and how she'd be really happy with this. Anyway, happy to vote for it. It's a great addition to our city, long overdue. And I think as long as we recognize that this is meeting the need, you know, we can debate over the merits of the housing policies and the projections, but I think it's pretty clear that we do have people in desperate need of this deeply affordable housing, these family units, these queer safe spaces. So we can debate the, the metrics of housing projections, but there's no debating the, the fact that this is a much-needed facility and housing for the city of Vancouver. So very happy to support it.
Thanks very much. Counselor Weave, up to five.
Um, yeah, I think that the comment about championing human rights and the fact that currently community is in a space that doesn't have the accessibility rights, I think was a big one for me that creating, like Chris said, a proudly queer space centered in the community that brings multiple organizations together and deliver the services that are much needed. It's something we should be looking at in the future of how we create this co-located space that brings groups like Rainbow Refugees and others together. I also want to see how our staff can continue to find projects that align with BC Housing to make sure that we can take advantage of that affordability and find ways to have that aligned while we're voting on the density. I think it's really critical when we have projects in front of us that we know that are really going to deliver in the end on the affordability as well as the community elements that we need. So very supportive and hopefully more projects like this come forward to our council.
Great. Thanks, Counselor Weave. Counselor Carr, up to five.
Great, thanks. There's hopefully more projects and hopefully not as long to take in, in coming to fruition. To, I, I just really want to express my thanks to, like my fellow councillors, the ongoing work of the ongoing work of community of Rainbow Refugees, Chris Morrissey and so many others. And yes, Jamie Lee Hamilton, you know, there's, there are so many. It is such a strong community and such a warm and welcoming community. And I'm very happy to hear McLaren House stepping forward to say that they would approach others in the surrounding area who, you know, may have unfounded misapprehensions and to bring those people into an understanding and a real joy in the presence of such a great project and people. And not just about the services that are being provided, which are so essential. And I can't help but think in terms of the Rainbow Refugees and climate change and the unbelievable political difficulties that are emerging around the world, that we're only going to face greater pressures in terms of the need to accept and welcome and support refugees into our community. So I think to have a safe space, have a space too that's got the sort of art and culture component to it, performance as well as the services, I think is also such an incredible boon in the West End. So my thanks to the applicant, to the housing provider, to the service providers, to BC Housing for stepping forward so there is a much deeper level of affordability than we normally see and is so welcome in this community and in this project. And to the speakers.
Thank you so much. I don't see anybody else on the queue. I'd just like to say it's a fantastic project too, and I really look forward to voting for it. It's tough as chair because you can't jump in as often on debate, but Hope Cult will indulge me and just let me say my piece here and say, yeah, looking forward to this. Thanks, everybody, for all their patience and staff for their fantastic work. So I'm going to call the vote on that. Councillor Boyle. That has passed with none in opposition. Thank you very much, council. It is 8:33. We have one more item on the list. Normally, I'd take a break. Folks want a break. I'm happy to do that for 10 minutes or we could just move on with the next application. So does anybody want a break? Okay, so I'm going to move on to item number six, which is the CD1 rezoning, 1405 East 15th Avenue and 3047 3071 Madams Avenue. Again, this reminder, if you want to declare conflict interest, now's the time to do it. And I'll have the clerk read the application.
This is an application by Stuart Howard Architects Inc. to rezone 1405 East 15th Avenue and 3047 to 3071 Madame Street from RT2 Residential District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-storey residential building with 82 secured market rental units, a building height of 21 metres or 68.89 feet and a floor space ratio of 2.71 are recommended. The general manager of planning urban design sustainability recommends approval as subject to conditions as set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments. Eighty-three pieces of correspondence in support, 22 pieces of correspondence in opposition, and five pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 4:00 PM today.
Thanks so much. We have Carly Rosenblatt here from the rezoning centre for the presentation. We do have speakers to this council, so let's proceed with the presentation. Whenever you're ready, staff. Sorry, I forgot. I didn't give folks enough time to change around. So I hope I haven't put too much pressure on you. Everything ready? We can't hear you, staff, so.
Hi, just a moment, please.
Okay, sure. Thanks. Sorry again, a little fast on the, quick on the draw there.
Can you see the screen? Are you able to see the screen?
Sorry, I was on mute. I can see myself on the WebEx screen and a very small version of your presentation. Yep, you need to just make that a little larger. It's fine on the public screen, though.
Okay. Can you, you can hear us and you can see the screen now?
Yep, it's a little small on the WebEx. We can hear you fine. But if we have trouble, we can always go to the orange cone and see a larger version. So I think you can proceed.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name's Carly Rosenblatt, rezoning planner for this application, which proposes to rezone a site at 1405 East 15th Avenue and 3047 to 3071 Madams Street, under the Affordable Housing Choices and Tierim Rezoning Policy. The subject site shown in red is made up of four lots at the north-east corner of East 15th Avenue and Knight Street. The lots are zoned RT2 Residential and currently developed with two duplexes and two detached houses. Surrounding sites to the north and west are also developed with mostly houses and duplexes. To the east is Clark Park, a well-used amenity in the local area. And south of the site is a five-storey rental building, also developed under the Affordable Housing Choices Policy. The site is approximately 1,760 square metres in size, and there are eight secondary rental units on site, with seven units occupied and one residential tenant who qualifies for tenant relocation under the city's tenant relocation policy. This is a bird's eye view of the site. It's occupied by two duplexes and two detached houses constructed in 1913 and the mid-to-late 1960s. Heritage staff have confirmed the site does not include any historic features and it is not on the heritage register. The site is located in the Kensington Cedar Cottage neighbourhood, which contains a variety of neighbourhood amenities. From the map, you can see parks, community spaces, institutional sites and childcare locations within approximately a 15-minute walk of the site. There's access to Clark Park, Sunnyside Park, Cedar Cottage Park, China Creek South and other outdoor recreation spaces. The Trout Lake Community Centre is nearby and childcare is provided at Dickens End School Care Programme, Nanook YMCA Childcare and Little Cedar School Age Care. In addition, there are multiple shopping districts, bicycle routes and transit routes nearby the subject site. The Housing Vancouver Strategy sets a target of 20,000 new market rental housing units across the city to help address Vancouver's historically low rental vacancy rate. This rezoning application is being considered under the Affordable Housing Choices and Tierim Rezoning Policy, which was approved in 2012. In November 2019, council approved the Secured Rental Policy, which consolidates opportunities for rezoning for secured rental housing previously contained in the Affordable Housing Choices Policy and the previous Rental 100 Policies. While the Affordable Housing Choices Policy was closed to new rezoning inquiries after June 30th, 2019, applications received up to this date can continue to be reviewed and assessed under the Affordable Housing Choices Policy. The inquiry for this rezoning application was submitted April 30th, 2019 and therefore can still be considered today. The intent of the Affordable Housing Choices Policy is to deliver 100% secured rental housing. Rezoning applications considered under the policy must meet a number of criteria, including fitting contextually with neighbouring development and meet location requirements. The subject site represented with a yellow star on the map is located on Knight Street arterial and within 500 metres of a local shopping area where six-storey buildings may be considered. The Affordable Housing Choices Policy allows for a maximum of two projects within 10 blocks along the arterial. The property directly south was rezoned under the AHC policy and constructed in 2017. The subject site would be the second project to be considered in this area within the 10-block limit. If approved, no further AHC applications may be considered along this section of Knight Street. The application was submitted on January 24th, 2020 with revised plans submitted April 22nd, 2021. It proposes 82 secured market rental units in a six-storey residential building with a partial seventh floor for rooftop amenity space. The building height is 21 metres and it has a density of 2.71 FSR and a floor area of 4,780 square metres. Parking is accessed off Madams Street and is being provided as per the parking by law. As part of the Restart Smart Vancouver initiative in response to COVID-19, the project will contribute to approximately 287 new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. This slide demonstrates a comparison between market rental and home ownership costs for housing in Vancouver's east side. The green box shows the average market rent for newer buildings in the east side with average household income served. The pink box on the right shows the average monthly cost per unit type that is associated with home ownership and the average household income served. With respect to proposed market rental units, these will be secured through a housing agreement prohibiting the stratification of units. The applicant is not taking the DCO waiver. Under the Community Amenity Contributions Rezoning, sorry, under the Community Amenity Contributions Policy for rezoning, lower-density secured market rental applications within the RT zones proposing more than five stories are required to include a financial statement for the city's review to assess the value of the project and determine if additional land lift has been created. The performer for this project has been reviewed by the city's real estate division, who concluded there is a land lift being generated through this application. Since the applicant will be paying DCLs and due to the scale of the project, the land lift is not sufficient to support below-market units within the project. Instead, the applicant is paying a cash CAC of $250,000, which is intended to be allocated to support nearby and active childcare projects in and around the Kensington Cedar Cottage area. A pre-application open house was held at the Croatian Cultural Centre in February 2020 and attended by approximately 63 people. Following submission of the rezoning application, the city hosted virtual open house was held from October 19th, 2020 to November 8th, 2020 on the Shaker City platform. The application drawings and details were made available online following application submission, along with my contact information and a form to submit feedback. In total, we received approximately 141 pieces of feedback. We heard a variety of comments throughout the review of this application, generally in support of the proposal. Key themes of support included the provision of affordable rental housing, building height, density and design, fit with neighbourhood context and provision of amenity space. Comments and concern related to the number of parking spaces proposed, building height and density, pace of development in the neighbourhood, privacy and access to sunlight and compliance with the location criteria under the Affordable Housing Choices Policy. A six-story height and density align with the Affordable Housing Choice Policy. The applicant has reinforced the residential character of the neighbourhood by retaining some mature trees on site, providing ground-oriented units and stepping back to upper stories from the floors below to reduce the appearance of the mapping and help minimise overlook and shadows on neighbouring properties north of the site. Finding available rental units is a challenge across the city with extremely low vacancy rates at less than 1%. There continues to be significant need for secured purpose-built rental housing options to help address the gap in the rental housing market in neighbourhoods across the city. This and the neighbouring properties to the south are the only possible rezonings to come in under the Affordable Housing Choices Policy along this section of Knight Street, based on the location criteria. Moreover, the Affordable Housing Choice Policy has since expired. In summary, staff recommends approval of this application to rezone 1405 East 15th Avenue and 3047 to 3071 Madams Street from RT2 to CD1, subject to the conditions outlined in appendix via the report as it meets the intent of the AHC policy. If approved, the application would contribute 82 new secured rental units, as well as financial contributions valued at approximately 1.6 million. This concludes my presentation. Both staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Just going to check if the applicant team would like to, is here. And would you like to answer any, would you like to make a presentation or just answer questions?
Yes, Your Worship. We are here and we would like to add to that.
Okay, great. Just if I could ask you to turn off your video because we're just councillors around video. That's great. Thanks very much. Please go ahead.
Please just bear with me for a moment. Can you see my screen?
It just needs to be flipped to presentation mode. I just.
Can you see that, Your Worship?
It's still, yeah, I guess, yeah, let's see how it works. We can see a photo. There's a lot of writing around the edges, but I think it's large enough. Yeah, okay, go ahead, please.
Good evening, Your Worship and Council. My name is Neil Robertson. I'm the project architect for this project. We've been working on this project with our client, city staff, and in consultation with the neighbourhood for nearly two years now. I believe the staff have done an excellent job introducing the project, as well as the applicable policies and guidelines. And as such, I will be focusing on our architecture and our design process for this project. For us, this project is really an expression and response to context. Virtually every design decision that we've made has been carefully measured, response to both internal and external forces. Can you see the next location maps?
We can.
Yeah. The site is located, as staff mentioned, in the Cedar Cottage neighbourhood, across the street from a similarly scaled five-story multifamily development under the same rezoning policy and to the south, to the south, and Clark Park to the east. Currently on site, there are four single-family homes, as well as several mature trees. Here are a few street-level views to demonstrate the current urban context. The top row are views looking north as you move along East 15th. The second row is also along East 15th, looking south. And the third row is along Madams Street, looking westward to our site. And finally, at the bottom, the row is along Knight Street, looking eastward back to our site and down East 15th. Context and massing was an important aspect of our design process. The predominant urban texture for the surrounding neighbourhood is quite mixed with a similarly scaled rental project to the south of us, as well as co-op housing, a large church at 17th, and with mainly duplexes and single-family homes to the north of us. I would like to point out with this image that although our project is one story taller than the project to the south, due to the grade dropping as you run northward along Knight Street, the elevation of the parapets of our project are roughly the same elevation as the project to the south. Essentially, we are sitting at the bottom of a depression along Knight Street. Currently on site, there are several mature tree specimens that the design team recognised as important and that we utilise to guide our layout for this project. We met with city staff at every early stage of the schematic design to discuss tree retention and the sighting of our project. And staff worked with us to identify priority trees. I'm happy to report with a fair amount of effort and flexibility on our client's behalf, we were able to protect and retain all of the identified trees by designing the building articulation to coincide with root protection zones of the trees. This has resulted in quite an unorthodox building footprint as the building bends around the various tree root protection zones. This also created the benefit of aiding us in breaking down the massing of the building through facade articulation and natural screening. benefit of aiding us in breaking down the massing of the building through facade articulation and natural screening. As staff mentioned, there's one level below-grade vehicular and bicycle parking in compliance with the parking by law.
I'm just going to stop you there, speaker. We're, we're a couple of slides behind on the public deck, and so I just want staff to catch up.
Sure.
Yeah, we're, and just one more slide there, staff, and then we'll be even. There we go. Okay, please continue.
Okay. The ramp entry is located in the northeast portion of the project. Slide. The typical lower floor plan has, has a fifty percent mix of family units with thirteen percent three bedrooms. Within the floor plan, we located the family units in the corners of the building to provide as much natural light as possible for those units. Additionally, on the north side of the building, we worked quite hard with staff to address overlooked concerns by orienting the primary outlook at the living spaces east and west and not towards the, the shared property line of the building. Slide. The typical upper floor plan continues the fifty percent mix of family units located at the corners, as well as eight-foot stepbacks on the east, west and south in order to reduce the apparent massing of the building when experienced from grade. On the north side, and in response to the built form to the north, we've provided an approximate twenty-eight-foot stepback. This will reduce overlook and shading concern, shading concerns for the properties to the north. Slide. On the roof, we are proposing to provide an indoor and outdoor amenity space with a children's play area to the west and an outdoor lounge area to the south. Our approach to this area was to differentiate the exterior uses while providing a shared space and experience on the interior. The interior spaces are pulled back from the floor below and are surrounded by planting, which will result in the space not being visible from the street. Slide. On the north side, we've introduced green screening, green screen growing walls to soften the interface to the properties to the north. As previously mentioned on the south, we've retained and employed, and employed the mature coniferous trees to serve this role. Slide. On the east and west, we have likewise utilized the existing mature tree and green screen growing walls respectively to screen and soften the project as it, as it addresses the public realm. Slide. In the section, you can see the dramatic stepback on the north side of the upper levels and how effective it is to mitigating the impact of the properties on that side of the project. Slide. Following a review at the Urban Design Panel, we worked quite hard to integrate their comments. We cleaned up and simplified the form and palette of the project into a more cohesive composition while retaining the use of, the use of robust, high-quality materials and retaining the mature trees. We relocated the building entry to the eastern side of the property so, so that it faces Clark Park. And we moved the amenity area to the roof to improve solar exposures for the users while creating a visual connection to the park. Slide, please. Here are a few more views for you from the northeast looking southwest on Madams and aerial looking northwest, as well as the corner view coming along Knight Street and at the corner of Madams and East fifteenth. Slide, please. Here's a view from Clark Park as you approach the building, which we hope will be a common vantage point as residents return from enjoying the amazing outdoor space at their doorstep. And finally, mayor and council, in the absence of a physical model provided in typical public hearings, we've prepared a quick fly-around of the project for you. The owner and design team are here and ready to answer any questions that you may have. With me while I keep the video. Can you see that?
Okay, and I'm just waiting to see if it comes up on the public screen. Oh, yeah, there it is too. Great. Okay.
This is the view looking westward back from Clark Park. This, this is the southern elevation of the two mature coniferous trees. This is coming around the view from Knight Street. This is the northern elevation of the building. You can see our employment of the green roof system, extensive green roof roof. And the rooftop amenity area. On the west, the children's play area. Thank you very much for your attention.
Great, thanks so much. We've got three counselors with questions to staff or the applicant. Please go ahead, councillor Weave, up to five minutes.
Yeah, my first question is on the recommendation in the end of the report, talk staff are recommending more square footage and height. I'm just wondering what the rationale is behind the recommendation being larger than the project proposed.
Hi there, Carly Rosmott speaking. So the when the revised plans were submitted, it was increased by three units. And so that's what the difference is in terms of the recommended and what was initially proposed and the height remains.
Okay, and then recognizing that some of the support from the community was on affordable housing, I'm just wondering how affordable housing was not able to be achieved with the performer on this project and how staff came up to a C A C of only six dollars and seventy-one cents per square foot.
Hi there, it's Sarah Sutton. I'm in the real estate team. And so as part of the C A C policy that we have, this site was not routine lower-density development, so rental development, so it was subject to our pro forma review. And, and one of the initial thoughts was that there could be some below-market housing within this project. And that wasn't something that the, the applicant wished to do and also they, they said and have decided that they'll be paying the D C Ls. So once that cost is factored into the pro forma, there's a relatively small land lift, a land lift that wouldn't really be sufficient for the city to administer kind of the, the small number of below-market units that that might come through us. So instead, we've arrived at a cash C A C with the applicant.
So how do we come up with a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar or six dollars and seventy-one cents C A C on this project? Can you break that out a little bit? Because we've seen projects of similar height be able to deliver affordability. So I'm just wondering how this project was expensive land? Like, what is the difference? That's not allowing us to meet the affordability goals on this project.
It was just reviewed on the same pro forma review basis that they all are. So we'll go through looking at the costs and revenues, which are reviewed by our Q S team. And, and the, all the costs that were factored in and the revenues, including the cost of the D C L meant that there is a pretty minimal land lift that resulted from it. So just a number of different things that were factored into the pro forma.
Okay, was that extra three units included in the pro forma that had been recommended by staff or no?
Yeah, I accounted for that in my pro forma review. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Onto councillor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Yeah, do we know what the rents are in the eight units that are going to have to be demolished? Does the staffer, the applicant know?
Thank you, councillor Swanson. We're just trying to look that up for you right now.
Okay, thanks.
Not off the top, not, not off the top of our head, but we
So while you're looking it up, I'll, I'll ask the applicant another question, which is, will this be a pet-friendly building?
Yes, it will.
Okay, that's good. And what do you anticipate that the rents will be?
I would, I'm the architect, so I would just let me defer to my, my client here on that.
Okay.
At this time, it's relatively uncertain what the rents will be, but it'll be determined at the time of building completion, which won't be for about three years.
Are you planning on getting any provincial or federal government financing?
No, we're not.
Okay, thank you. Any?
Okay.
Any word on the rents? Of the, the housing to be demolished?
We are working on it right now, councillor, please.
Okay.
Okay, you have time, councillor Swanson? Yep, so councillor Hardwick has questions also, so go ahead, councillor Hardwick.
Sure, thank you. I'm just looking at a series of questions that we've received. The first with, in terms of compliance with the, the prevailing policy here. The first is about the, the location, it's expressed in the presentation as being on an arterial. It's being stated by residents that there is a lane and a city easement between this proposal and the arterial and that all development over the easement is, has been disallowed since nineteen sixty-three into perpetuity. So this project faces onto East fifteenth and Madam Street, not the arterial, according to what's being expressed here. The city says that if a lot faces off an arterial with a hundred, within a hundred meters from an arterial, then it can only be built to four stories. And there's a link to the policy that was provided in this. Could you please address that issue?
Thank you for your question. The site has three frontages onto streets. It goes onto Knight Street, Madams, as well as Eastern Team. There is an easement that's located on the site and it runs, the proposal, proposed building runs up to the east and it does not cross over it.
Okay, so that the answer is that it's subject to interpretation of the definition. So the next question is that in terms of the number of projects in close proximity, the fact that there's already two of these projects within ten blocks of each other on inner arterial, the city policy that says that only two can be built to maintain neighborhood character and this project will make three. Can you address that question, the number of projects within proximity?
Yes, thank you for your question. So the project is facing Knight Street arterial and there is a requirement that you have no more than two projects within ten blocks along the arterial. And this would be the second project. There's already an existing one directly south of this project.
Yeah, it says there's one across the street from this proposal and a second one seven blocks from the proposal. The, the ones already built at thirty-one twenty to thirty-one eighty-four Knight and thirty-three sixty-five Commercial Drive and one sixteen ninety-five to seventeen seventy-three East Eighteenth.
Those are all on, on different arterials and different projects?
Okay, that's for, hopefully the residents are listening to the answers to these questions. They're, okay, so that is in, in a different interpretation of what has been set forward. There's also concern about extreme shadowing on the houses to the north of, of the proposal. It says if an amenity area is put on the roof, this will create overlook to the houses, a lot of noise, given that there will be eighty-two units using this space. Has a shadow study been undertaken and considered the effect on the adjacent or the properties across the street?
Thank you for your question, my colleague Pat.
Yeah, this is Pat Chan speaking, development planner. Yes, the, the shadows will fall onto the, the, the houses to the north. But however, the, the planning department, sort of hierarchy of shadowing, it's first try to stave shadow off public spaces, then public sidewalks, then private property. And in terms of shadowing onto the park to the east, that's Clark Park, the shadow does start to creep into the park around three fifteen in the afternoon. And our park sport had reviewed this project and weighed in and, and thought in exchange for sort of rental housings being built, some level of shadowing could be the trade-off in this case.
Okay. I'm running out of time and I imagine there'll be time for further questions after speakers, so I'll park it there. Thank you.
Thanks.
Do the applicants have an answer for councillor Swanson on the rents of the existing housing?
Yes, we do, your worship.
Okay, go ahead.
The existing rents of the rental units on site at the moment range between thirteen fifty a month to thirty-five fifty a month.
Okay, thank you, councillor Swanson. Did you have anything else?
That's good, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dominado, questions to applicant or staff?
Thanks, mayor, and a question to staff and it just, I, I believe the applicant responded that indeed this would be a pet-friendly building. And while I know you can't speak for park board formally, but I am curious about how we engage in discussions with park board with respect to these developments, because there's been a number of requests from the community for a off-leash area at Clark Park. And increasingly, as we're densifying and adding rental and strata and people have pets, is they do need a place to take their pets. And so I'm just curious about how that works in the context of our, our planning discussions. And do you need direction through this rezoning tonight to communicate this?
Thank you for that question. This would be reviewed by park board staff outside of this rezoning.
Thank you, councillor Dominado. Further questions? This is Teresa. We, I don't know that it would be appropriate to attach a condition to this particular zoning case, but it's certainly a question that we can raise with park board staff and let them know of council concern.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not trying to suggest a, a condition, but I, I think it's really important. I, I know park board has their own planning process around parks and, and off-leash areas for dogs, but since there is another adjacent building and this would be a new one, that that there should be some consideration for that in that communication. And I'm happy to leave that with staff that you'll take that away and have that conversation with your counterparts at park board. But I do think it's an important consideration as we're going forward and we're adding additional density.
Thank you. We, we will follow up with them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think that's it for questions from councillors, so we can move on to hearing from the public. I have six registered speakers. The first speaker is Sydney Tianzi. Sydney Tianzi, speaker number one.
Hi.
Hi there. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Hi, awesome. Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Sydney Tianzi and I am calling in support of the proposal at fourteen oh five East fifteenth Avenue. I'm a renter myself, so I very much know, know the firsthand struggles of finding appropriate rental housing options in Vancouver. My roommate, I saw so many homes around this area with many unsuitable and unsecured options and very few livable suites. We encountered tiny apartments for much higher than we were expecting and many basement suites. For all we know, these landlords couldn't fortunately decide on the whim to give these basement suites to a relative or a teenager who needs the space. Bottom line is that I believe we need more secured rental in our city and creating a range of housing in an area like this simply makes sense. Kensington Cedar Cottage is full of charm and character making Kensington Cedar Cottage is full of charm and character-making, is a super desirable area. And personally, I love spending time on the drive at nearby parks, cafes, and restaurants. However, I do realize that so many of the rental homes in this area are nearing the end of their life cycles. Unless we take action to replace and supplement the rental stock with high-quality and secure options like the one before you tonight, we will see our neighborhoods change and deteriorate. Finally, I think this proposal is well-designed, and it seems that the developer has really taken into consideration the neighborhood and adopted the proposal accordingly. I appreciate your time to hear my point of view, and thank you, Council.
Thanks so much. I don't see any questions for you, so we're going to move on to the next speaker. Speaker number two is Jeremy Anderson, speaker number two.
Okay, thanks for your participation. Just wanted to call and speak in support. Just checking if you guys can hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, thanks. Sorry, just got to call in support. I've lived in the neighborhood for almost six years now. I frequently walk my dog near Clark Park, so I know the neighborhood well. I think it'd be a great addition to have more rental in the neighborhood. I know I have friends that walk within this neighborhood, have trouble finding places to live. Just wanted to also note that there is a dog park at South Lake, which is very short walk away. Just speaking to the council's concern about letting take pets, those lost in the neighborhood. And just lastly, I think I know a lot of my neighbors in the neighborhood. We're all very proud of the fact that it's a very vibrant neighborhood, and we welcome more additions to the neighborhood. There's plenty of space for everyone. That's all I have to say. Thanks for taking your time.
Okay, thanks so much for calling in. You don't have any questions, so we're going to move to the next speaker. Counsel, next speaker is number three, Owen Lewis.
Mayor, speaker three is not on the line.
Thank you, clerks. We'll move on to speaker number four, Andrew Laurie.
Hi, can you hear me?
If you can, up to five minutes, please.
Oh, sounds good. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Andrew Laurie, and I'm calling in support of this project. I've been a resident in the neighborhood, and I'm also in the construction industry, so I do know sort of some of the challenges that are faced as far as rental pool and suitable rental. And I think this project is one of those projects that thinks outside the box a little bit, and addresses a lot of the concerns, especially particularly to East Vancouver, as far as what the community needs. And adding additional rental, I think, is fairly important. On a personal note, I have a young family, and we're noticing a trend, and it's quite an upsetting trend in the sense that we're getting close friends to my kids who are being evicted for one reason or another, relatives moving in or other reasons, and they can't find suitable rental within East Vancouver. So close friends of my young children are now having to relocate to, you know, further away, making it not feasible to meet them at the park and sort of the playdates that we're used to. So I do believe there is a strong need for rental. This particular project, I think it does think outside the box a little bit in the sense that it does have the rooftop amenities. And being a father of young children, I think it's kind of a neat feature to have the ability to sort of take your family up and play on a roof, as opposed to going to some of the parks, especially given some of the parks in my immediate neighborhood, or there's a lot of unsavory things happening in these parks right now. So the opportunity to sort of have a safe outdoor space for my family, I think, speaks to the nature of the project. So I think it's a great project for young families, and I do believe there is a need for rental in Vancouver to keep young families engaged and committing to the community. And I just wanted to strongly encourage Council to approve this proposal, and hopefully we can continue to rethink how we deliver rental to the city. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. There are no questions, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. The next speaker, number five, is Paul Hecht.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for your time and for hearing me. I have some questions for staff and a general few points I'd like to raise in opposition. I am a local resident here on East 15th, just to the west of the proposed development, and have lived here for about four and a half years. The first question I do have is around some of the fundamentals of the proposal with respect to there being adequate childcare and schools to service these new units. I'd like staff to dig in and validate the opportunities in these schools and childcare spots. I know from our own personal experience that all the schools and daycare have extensive waitlists, and we know that childcare is a real issue. And again, adding density doesn't seem to be a solution to that. We need a broader policy. So I'd like someone to validate. I don't believe there are adequate school or childcare spaces, so I'd like someone to address that. As well as, in the proposal, it speaks about a 1% vacancy rate in Vancouver. I've also seen many published reports that the vacancy rate has more than doubled since 2020, that we're now at 2.6%, while that still, I admit, is a challenge. What we're seeing, what the previous caller mentioned about people leaving neighborhoods, there is a, what seems to be a bit of a migration out of Vancouver. Are these trends being followed up on? And can someone from staff validate the actual vacancy rate versus what's in the proposal? I'll leave the questions for a moment, just state a couple other objections. Parking, I think we heard some other concerns about parking. Clark Park is a treasure. I don't know how many of you spend time there. But it is a very popular, well-attended park, and parking will certainly be a concern to allow access to people in and out of the neighborhood. And lastly, you know, in the time that we've lived here, there's been quite a bit of disruption in and around the park. The park is sort of a bit of a sanctuary for folks, but the development to the south was quite disruptive. There was extensive sewer work on night that I know is necessary. And an additional year or two-year disruption in the neighborhood will hinder people's enjoyment, and especially in coming out of COVID, where people really take refuge in the park. I think it's an unnecessary disruption to a place that is really treasured, as well as the spoiling of the stem and the shadow concerns that I think are... So I'll leave it at that and state my objection, and hope that some of those questions I had could be addressed. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. Just so you know how public hearings work, it's a quasi-judicial body. And so what happens is that staff and applicants present. The counselors can ask questions to staff or the applicant, but then we hear from the public. So we can ask you questions, but it doesn't work the other way around. And that's outlined in the Vancouver Charter. So however, what does happen sometimes is counselors will ask staff questions that year from testimony like yours. So I just wanted to let you know, we're not ignoring you. It's just by statute that we, that participants don't have the ability to ask staff direct questions.
Sure, thanks for clarifying.
Okay, thanks so much for your time this evening. I don't see any questions from staff for you, sorry, from Council to you. And so I'm going to move to the next speaker. Okay, Counsel, we've got Hafem El Khatib is next, speaker number six.
Hello?
Hello?
You guys, hi.
Oh, hi there. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Aysam Al Khatib, and I'm a local business owner and resident of the area. I want to express my strong support for the project at 1405 East 15th Street and 3371 3047 Madam Street. If you approve this project, you will see 82 new rental homes created to help assist us in this housing crisis. Located off the drive but still very close to transit, this area is well-positioned to provide services and amenities to more residents than its current house. I own a restaurant nearby, and the COVID-19 pandemic has been difficult for all of us, as I'm sure you know. Beyond just that, you see the housing crisis affecting my staff and customers. The rental market is extremely competitive, and with every new rental unit built, that stress is taken off someone who is struggling to find a place to live. New residents will hopefully bring a new customer base to restaurants like mine and support other small businesses in the area. I really hope that Council will vote in support of this development. It appears to me that time has been spent to ensure that it fits in with the neighborhood, and that changes have been made to reflect feedback. Furthermore, you can see that pains have been taken to retain the mature trees on site, which allows for a smooth transition from the park across the street. So thank you again for the chance to speak before you tonight, and I urge you to vote in favor of this project.
Thank you so much for calling in this evening. I don't see any questions for you, so just thanks for your participation tonight. Counsel, I'm going to make my first call for speakers as we reach the end of our registered list. So the number to call is 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445 pound. This is the first call, and I'm going to ask the clerks, is there anybody else on the line for the site?
There are additional speakers on the line, Mayor, yes.
Great, okay. Can we have the first speaker? If you could let us know your name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver? Hello? Her name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver? Name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver?
Hello?
Hi there. Thanks for calling in. If we just have your name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver, and then you have up to five minutes to address Counsel.
Hi, Mayor Stewart and counselors. My name is Maximin Lepert, and I reside in Vancouver. Whilst I do not reside in this direct neighborhood of our city, as a Croatian diaspora, I do have a close attachment to this neighborhood, given that the Croatian Cultural Centre that I frequent is nearby. In fact, it's less than a 10-minute walk from this proposed development. So I am quite invested in this particular rezoning that's before you guys today. I'm calling in today to voice my strong support of this rezoning, and I encourage you guys to vote for it. So I know that this rezoning proposal will ameliorate the economic plight and housing precariousness that we Vancouver youth endure. This project is going to provide 82 units, up from an initial proposed 79, to Vancouverites in a family-oriented neighborhood. It's located directly across from a park, several parks actually. It's along major traveling routes, and it's by cultural centers. It's in these locations, but we should be increasing density. Increasing the amount of renters will allow a diverse neighborhood to flourish, whilst addressing the scarcity of our affordable housing. Speaking of this, I wanted to highlight, the presentation portion highlighted how market rental is occupied by those with average household incomes, less than those of home ownership incomes. As noted in the presentation that was given to us today, some renters have 50% less income than those of homeowners. I understand some counselors have expressed concern with the performa. However, I would encourage all parties to consider the net benefit of additional rental units, which provide housing at expense rates lower than that of ownership expense rates. Moreover, I appreciate how this project's teams collaborated with the community at the Croatian Cultural Centre to ensure a community-supported development was actualized. I appreciate how the developers increased green roof space, added childcare play, retained the large trees, implemented landscape buffers for the neighboring houses, and they made several lever changes. Lastly, I wanted to address the previous individuals' concerns regarding parking and rental availability. I would assert that many of the renters will take advantage of our transit network, which the Sky Transit Station is only a 10-minute walk away from this site. Thus, this project, which will address public concern whilst providing essential rental stock, has my support. Once again, thank you for letting me voice my support for this project, and I encourage you to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you so much for calling in. Clerks, I'm making my second call now for this item. The numbers to call in and the codes for to enter the queue are on Twitter and on the live stream. I just wondered if there's anybody else on the line, clerks?
There are additional speakers on the line, Mayor.
Great. The next speaker, if you could just let us know your name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver, then you have up to five minutes.
Speaker with the last four digits, 4816, you can speak now.
Hello?
Hi there. Please let us know your name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver, and you can speak for up to five minutes.
Yep, thank you. Hello, Mayor. My name is John Guerno, and I reside in Vancouver. I am calling today to voice my support for 1405 East 15th Avenue, where there should be a rezoning of a six-story residential secured building. This proposal is a project that will ease our crazy housing market for Vancouver and youth like myself, because this will be secured rental, which is what we need here. This project will ensure at least 79 secured rental units will be available to Vancouverites like myself. And I see and appreciate that the developer has listened to the public's concerns and has revised their design and plan. One of the most things that stood out for me was the outdoor amenity room and extensive grass roof with the gathering space and child-friendly play area, which I value the most. Other factors that caught my attention is that there's a setback on the upper levels for, which is very important nowadays days. The war privacy for sure rings a bell for all of us. With these reasons, this project addresses the public's concerns while providing essential rental stock. Therefore, it has such a strong support from my point of view. Last but not least, this project's location is so ideal for development. As the youth of Vancouver and future, we need more density and rental stock in the city and near the city. This project is near Knight Street, which is a major road to the city via transit as well, as the previous speaker said. It is easy, it is these districts that we need to have increased density. So we're providing the opportunity to speak today, and I'm in support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to go back and see if there's anyone else that wants to speak to this item. Clerks, anybody else on the line?
No, Mayor. We need to confirm who's on the line at this point.
Okay, I'm going to make my third and final call, just allow you to do that. So the numbers to call in are on Twitter and the live stream. And we'll take a five-minute break just to get the final speakers lined up. It is 9:28. We'll come back at 9:33. See you in five minutes, Counsel. Hi clerks, just checking in. Hi clerks, just checking in to see if we're at nine thirty-three, just checking to see if there's any extra speakers, any new speakers? Just one second, council, we'll just, we had some audio problems earlier, we'll see if we... Our speaker? Just looking for the first speaker. Get the... First speaker? Hi clerks, just checking in for the first speaker to see if anybody's there.
We have two speakers on the line, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, speaker with the last four digits, three seven six five, you can speak now.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Sure can, please let us know your name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver and then you have up to five minutes to speak.
Okay, my name is Arsalan Shigan, yes, I do reside in Vancouver. So I'm just calling today to voice my support on this six-storey rental development. I think the rezoning proposal will for sure ease the pressure on the housing market nearby and I think it'll help youth like myself in Vancouver with, especially with the eighty-two new rental units that they're proposing. The developers for this site listed, I think they listened with care to the public's concern and I believe this development has become more holistic in terms of livability by increasing green area on the roof and the children's playing area and whatnot. This development also retains large trees and implements landscape buffers, which is much needed as well. I think this project addresses the public's concern while providing essential rental stock. More so, this project's location is ideal for the increased density and rental stock, I believe. I note that it is located across the street from a park and along Knight Street, a major road. It is in these locations that density ought to be increased. Once again, I would like to voice my support for this project and I appreciate the opportunity, the opportunity I was given to speak. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks so much for your time tonight. I don't see any questions for you, so we'll go on to the next speaker. Clerks or moderator, hi there, please go ahead up to five minutes, but can we have your name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver first, please?
Yes, my name's Grace McKenzie and our family's been in Cedar Cottage for seventy-nine years, sorry. I've got a cold. Anyhow, my biggest concern is I'm a resident of Cedar Cottage and I am also a CCAN member and I got the CCAN letter and that they sent to the Mayor and council for public hearing. So they say in the letter that, and I agree with them a hundred percent, a maximum of twenty applications are permitted under this policy, which is the affordable housing policy, and no more than two projects within ten blocks along any arterial street. This is a second rezoning application within a ten-block radius. The first one we had was on Commercial Drive at Eighteenth and the other one was just across the street on Knight Road. So I'm kind of upset that staff would not follow the city policy. It doesn't say two of these projects on Knight Street. It says on any and it is really specific, it says any two arterials. So, you know, we're just getting piled on with these projects. So, that's too much. The thing that I'm really irritated about is that they don't follow their own city policies. Okay, that's my first problem. The second problem I have is, I'm looking at the letter, just give me a chance to get the CCAN letter up here. So, this being on an arterial or not, because if it's not on an arterial, then it should only at the most be four stories. There is, and the CCAN organisation, Residents' Association, they went to land title and they got the little map and they got the wording for the easement. And the easement is thirteen point seven feet wide between the Knight Street and the west side of the property of the fourteen oh five East Fourteenth. And it's twenty point ten feet between Knight Street and the west side of the Madame Street properties. So there's no buildings or any kind of sidewalk, like an entrance to the building or anything else is allowed to be built on that easement. That's what, we sent that to you in the easement agreement. So, we can't understand why a seven-story building's being built here. Not a six-story even, but there should only be a four-story building. So if you can take that into consideration when you're making your decision, it would be greatly appreciated. You know, we have no problem in our organisation with people renting because we rent out our basement suites to people and there are renters in our organisation. This is not the problem. The problem is lack of trust from the public, I guess, because the staff don't follow their own policies. And if the staff, if the council doesn't follow the policies, then where do we citizens stand? I mean, you know, there's no hope if you don't pay attention to your own policies. So, that's my two cents worth. Again, thank you very much. I don't know, I'm here if you have any questions, I don't know if you do, but...
I don't see any councillors on the list for questions for you. So I'll just say thank you so much for calling in this evening and sharing your points of view.
Speaker with the last four digits, nine nine zero two, you can speak now.
Good evening, my name's Rebecca Fox and I'm a resident of the Cedar Cottage neighbourhood. I also have no problem with more rental housing, especially good rental housing at some kind of reasonable rate and of course, the builders are not saying what the units will be, what the rents will be at this time. My problem is that you're over-densifying Cedar Cottage without increasing the services to the neighbourhood. The neighbourhood house is in disrepair, all the daycares have waiting lists and there's no place to go with the schools other than to add more portables. So my suggestion to you is, I don't know what you're going to do with this two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, but, and I assume you're going to approve this project tonight, well, while it's being built, perhaps you could think about adding more services to our neighbourhood so that when families do move in, there's daycare for them, there's school for them, there's an increase in transit on Knight Street and there's a neighbourhood house that they can go to. Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening. I don't see any questions for you, so we'll move to the next speaker. I understand, council, there's three more speakers, so two more speakers, so we can go to the next speaker?
Speaker with the last four digits, five seven three three, you can speak now. Speaker with the last four digits, five seven three three, you can speak now.
Oh, I think that's me. I'm sorry, this is...
Yep, just your name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver and you can go ahead for up to five minutes.
Yeah, this is James Evans calling. I am a resident of Vancouver, actually I don't live very far away from the site. Thanks for affording the opportunity for me to speak. I have kind of a unique perspective as I was actually the proponent of the project that got built across the street a number of years ago, the other rental building that, I think it's, I can't remember the address, but it's at the southeast corner. And that project was quite controversial at the time, however, it did, council saw fit to approve it. And one of my observations when I was going through that process is that there's very little in the way of purpose-built rental in the neighbourhood, at least it was until that project was built. And there's a real desperate need for rental in that particular area, so I think that this project really serves a need that is in that area. Because otherwise, if you're a tenant, really your options, if you want to take and live in that area are predominantly basement suites and it's a couple of smaller little rental buildings there, duplexes and the like. And that's really sort of all that I have to say. So I would encourage you to approve this project. I think it's a good project, I think it's well-conceived and as I say, having done one in the neighbourhood before, I know that there's certainly a demand for it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you this evening, so I'll move on to the next speaker. Moderator, if you could queue the next speaker, that would be great.
Speaker with the last four digits, zero seven seven four, you can speak now.
Zero seven seven four? Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, up to five minutes. Please just let us know your name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver.
Perfect. Hello Mayor and councillors, my name is Ethan Whiting and I am resident in Vancouver. Speaking in support of the revised, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please go ahead.
I'll be speaking in the revised development with the six-story secure residential and rental building. We all know the severity of the housing crisis that is going on in Vancouver, that we have all faced over the past few years. As the city continues to grow and develop, it is crucial that we continue to densify our neighbourhood with projects like this. Speaking as a recent graduate coming back to Vancouver, it is almost next to impossible to find a sustainable place to live due to demand and cost that is being caused by a shortage of housing. I've noticed that the project has been revised and resubmitted to work around neighbourhoods in order to create balance with public concerns regarding privacy by having a setback in the upper level, which will make the development less bulky and more...
You're, yeah, speaker, you're fading out a little bit on the phone.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, you're just fading out a little bit, so if you could speak directly into your mouthpiece, that would be great.
And child play areas, retain trees and other changes. This project is located in an area that needs to have increased density and rental stock. It is located across the street from a park and along Knight Street, a major road. It is in these locations that density needs to be increased. Once again, I would like to voice my support for this project. Thank you guys for providing the opportunity to speak for you today.
Okay, thank you so much, thank you. I don't see any questions for you? So I'm going to ask the moderator, is there anybody else on the line for this item?
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Great, okay, thank you so much. So we're going to close the speakers list. And we, as we've had little or no public input comments since five PM today, we'll close the receipt of public comments. Just ask the applicant, does the applicant have any closing comments?
Thank you, worship. Just, it's getting late here, so just a couple of comments. We think this is a great project, we're quite excited about it. I think it's obviously biased position, but I think it's a very handsome building. In regards to the shadows, it was mentioned by a few speakers back in the first few, that shadows were one of the main impetus for us to step the building back twenty-eight feet on the north, it was to address those shadows. And in our shadow studies that we did with the city, although our project in the afternoon, late afternoon, did just touch the park, I would like to point out that there are a whole bunch of trees along the west side of the park, which cast a great deal more shadows than our building would. So, I thank staff and council for their time tonight and I think we'll just leave it there. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Staff, any closing comments?
Staff do not have any closing comments, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, council, any questions for staff?
Point of procedure, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, this is councillor Carr. I'm just wondering if you may be welcoming a motion to extend this meeting? motion to extend this meeting and to complete this item. I'm happy to move such a motion.
Okay, uh, it, can I hold you for five minutes and we'll just see?
You may.
Okay, uh, so I don't see any questions to staff, so would have somebody move the motion?
Awesome, move.
Thank you councillor Carr, do we have a second here?
I'm councillor Boyle.
Thank you councillor Boyle, okay, we're on the main queue, does anybody wish to speak to this item? I don't see anybody on the queue to speak to this item, so I can call the vote and I will call the vote now on this item. Looking for councillor Kirby Young and councillor Carr.
Mayor, I, I do need a vote assist in favor, please.
Thank you councillor Carr. Hey, uh, that has passed with councillor Hardwick in opposition. So, believe it or not, council, we did the six items and so now we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you councillor Kirby Young, we have a second here?
Second.
Thank you councillor Hardwick, all in favor, say yay.
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 Those may, great, uh, anything else clerks, are we good?
Oh, that's great, Mayor, good night.
Okay, thank you everybody, have a good evening, thanks for the day. Bye-bye.
Everyone.
Everyone.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, council.